We have a implication right now.
Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, Mrs. Seale.
All right, now we go with recognitions.
Good evening. Representatives is an opportunity for the border state parties to recognize that people in our community are focused on the accomplishment of free employees and outstanding performance. Please show your town your hands up. Vice President, you're seen as a protestant. And in the last, the last thing, David. In a minute. We'll have time to talk. Bryce Keach has been employed among the primary for excellent conduct ethic, commitment to communication, and ability to go above and beyond. Bryce recently led the warehouse team from his department coordinating assignments and follow-through while the director was out on medical leave to ensure his team would stay on schedule and return to normalcy after projects, making human assets more healthy. Bryce, who joined Prince Edward County in April 2023, has been recognized as Employee of the Month at Chief Executive Bureau. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good, good evening, everybody. So Adam was unable to be here due to a family emergency, so I'm filling in. On behalf of our department, we, as you guys know, have hired a new animal control officer, Caitlin Moore. So Caitlin Moore joined our animal control department on July 15th of last year as a kennel tech and animal control officer in training. She is always eager to learn and has enjoyed helping the animals out in our county to the best of her ability. She enjoys the fact that every new, every new day presents a new challenge for us. No day is ever the same. In the beginning of April of this year, Caitlin completed her certification in basic animal control class, which consists of three weeks of learning our state animal laws, how to handle seizure and cruelty cases, and how to properly interact with the public when handling situations, situations involving animals. She looks forward to her future as an animal control officer and assisting both our citizens and animals throughout the county. So please help me welcome Caitlin to the Prince Edward family.
Congratulations.
You got another name?
Sir, we'd have you might sign up on the hold a second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, presentation patient, we have Mark.
All right, I see. Mark French.
No? That was in the other.
Okay.
Okay. All right, you go here, Hattler McCoy. Just state your name and where you live at.
Alex McCoy, 107 Lancer Circle, Unit G, here in the great city of Farmville. Mr. Chairman, honorable supervisors, I'm Alex McCoy, and I'm the new executive director for Virginia's Heartland Regional Economic Development Alliance. I wanted to come tonight and thank you for your participation within the group as one of its founding members. I firmly believe in trying to get to know people before you need them, and the time for me to introduce myself to you was not when I had a client at the same time. So I wanted to come by tonight to give you a chance to put a face to the name. My phone number is on the presentation that I have provided you. I would greatly enjoy an opportunity to have a cup of coffee with each and every one of you and hear about your vision for the future of our community and hear how you believe that we can be good partners to one another. With that, I know you have a very busy agenda tonight, so I was going to keep my comments rather short at this time unless someone has a question for me.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Superbord comments, supervisor Jim.
Like I say, it's a full house tonight. Thank you all for being here. As you very well know, this is your time to come and somewhat hold us accountable by all means to give us your input. We thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate your support and always willing to hear your voice.
Supervisor Brad, supervisor Joe.
Good evening. Glad to see you all out this evening. Glad you come to see how your government work, and please let us know what information you need from us and what you want us to do for you. Thank you.
Thank all y'all for coming. Supervisor Joe.
I echo the previous comments. I'd like to wish a Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there. Good to see so many familiar faces, some new faces. That means that we've got some work to do tonight, so thank you for, for being here and holding us accountable.
Thanks for everyone coming. I hope it rained at your house, too, and dry, and we appreciate your input.
Supervisor Dr. Pratt.
Good evening, everyone. As has been stated by other supervisors, it's good to have you here and happy to have you be a part of the government. Thank you much for coming.
Supervisor Gill.
I'll reiterate all the comments made, and I am glad to see everyone house full tonight. We know it's of yours interest to talk to us when need be, and we listen and understand. Thank you.
Okay. Now we've got the superintendent Jim. The approval.
If there are no additions or deletions, I ask that they be approved as presented.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gill.
Yes.
Doctor Pratt.
Yes.
Supervisor Watson.
Yes.
Supervisor Joe.
Yes.
Supervisor J, yes? Supervisor.
Yes.
Supervisor Taylor.
Yes, I mean, yes.
Okay. Now we'll go on to the National Weather Service Wakefield Storm Ready Committee Presentation. Trey Powell.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm only going to speak for just a second. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eric Seymour from the National Weather Service out of Wakefield. But this project, we started back in the late fall, early winter of 2023, become storm-ready. It's a recognition by the National Weather Service. I'm not going to take all of his comments, let him tell you about the whole program, and then answer the sort presentation for you all.
Good evening, board. Thank you all for allowing us to come and celebrate the, the actions of the emergency management community for the city of, for the town of Farmville, for the Prince Edward County, and then also Longwood University and Hampton Sydney College. As Trey said, this was a, this is a prog, a kind of a project they've been working on for, you know, several months, and the storm-ready program is designed to help localities get themselves ready for when severe weather occurs. We know we can't stop weather when it's coming. Weather's going to do what it's going to do, but we can do things to help mitigate the damage that occurs, and that's what the storm-ready program is. It's getting, it's using, the emergency management community is using it to get their plans in place, to make sure that when something happens, they, they're not trying to figure out what to do. They know what they're going to do. Those plans are already in place. It's also a, an opportunity to educate the public, to make sure the public knows, when we issue a severe thunderstorm warning, what do we want them to do? When we issue a tornado warning, what should they be doing? When we issue a flood warning, you know, we've got the Appomattox River running right through the county and through town, what should people be doing? And that's part of what this program is. It's, it's educating, so it's them planning, but it's also us, the opportunity to educate. Back in March, we held SkyWarn Training. We held three sessions here in one afternoon, and I think we had about thirty, thirty-five people come in for that. That was great. I'd love to have more folks participate in that so that they understand when we issue these warnings what it, what it means, because we want people to take action, and that's what this program is. It's getting, getting it to the point that you've got your plan in place. We're educating people so that we can help mitigate the impacts from weather. So with that, I want to honor all four of the jurisdictions. I have plaques for them, and I guess, how do you want to do it, Trey? Okay, well, first one I have up is Prince Edward County, so.
All right. Good job.
The next recognition is for the town of Farmville. Evacuate, you might say?
Yes.
I got over. Is that good? Okay, Longwood University. All right, my last recognition for tonight is for Hampton Sydney College.
All right, we'll move forward to the community part of updates. Longwood University, Mr. Justin Poole.
Thank you, Austin. Nice to see you again. I'll, I'll be brief and just say it is certainly a complex and challenging time for, for higher education, but Longwood is, is in a really great place right now. We're really proud of where we are and the momentum we have, and I hope our community is too. We've graduation coming up this weekend. You all may remember that about, about ten years ago, we, we ceded Mother's Day weekend to our, our colleagues, colleagues up the road to help allow for a second weekend of festivities and hotel and restaurant tax collection, so we're excited about that this summer.
Much appreciated. Seriously. That's a big deal.
Second, second weekend of crowds, crowds downtown and throughout the county is, is going to be really nice to see. Hopefully, the weather will, will hold off, but if not, we're ready with, with storm preparation, so. Also, this summer, a lot of excitement on campus redoing the dining hall, and most excitingly, I've mentioned this project before, but construction should start by the beginning of the new school year on a new approximately eighty million dollar state-funded music building, which will be right here on Main Street. It'll be the, the center of the music program at Longwood, also the Center for Community Music, which my children and many other children in Prince Edward, where they, where they learn the joys of, of instruments, and will also be a, a great regional performance space. It'll be two or three years before it's finished, but a magnificent building that's really going to be transformative for this community. Starting in July, August, a really strong freshman, freshman class in, coming in. It's hard to know exactly how it all shapes out, but right now on track to be our strongest freshman class since before COVID, so we think that there will be more undergraduates at Longwood in the fall than there were last fall, and we're moving in a good, good, healthy direction, and that'll be, be good for everyone. Two quick people things. First of all, we're extremely proud of Chip Jones, Longwood undergraduate class of ninety-seven and graduate class, I believe, of two thousand and four, new school superintendent here in Prince Edward, and really looking forward to and already speaking with him regularly about, about how to really build a, a strong partnership going forward. We've had a great working relationship with interim superintendent Cox. Angela McDonald, who's the dean of the Longwood College of Education, came in two years ago with a, a charge that one of her very, very highest priorities was to, to strengthen and really, really build a relationship between, between Longwood and Prince Edward that's, that's rooted in both what we can do to help, but also very clearly listening to what the schools need from us, which frankly was not, I don't think, always the case. And so really excited about that partnership going forward. And finally, one last people thing, you may, may have heard the news that after seven, seven great years, head basketball coach Griff, Griff Aldrich got a, an offer he couldn't, couldn't refuse to, to go back to UVA and coach with his best friend, Ryan Odom, which we certainly, certainly understood, but we're really delighted to have waiting in the wings, Ronnie Thomas, who has lived in Farmville since 2020. He's a Virginia native, incredible human being. I'm sure you've seen him out walking his dogs, talking on the phone with his, with his daughter, his wife Brittany. Wonderful, wonderful people who are going to be tremendous ambassadors and leaders and, and representatives of, of Longwood basketball and Longwood University going, going forward, so we really look forward, hopefully, seeing you all on the JPP next season as, as the torch, torches pass. So a lot, a lot going on, very proud, really a lot of good people in place and, and leadership and across the university, and we're really excited about, about the upcoming year. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hampton Sydney College, King of Copeland Junior.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to be here. I, I bring Dr. Stempert's regrets. He was not able to be here tonight, but so you, Justin and I were saying, you're getting the, you're getting the higher ed B team tonight. Thanks for putting up with us. We concluded our academic year of commencement this past Saturday. We graduated one hundred and seventy-one Tigers that are going out and hopefully going to take the world that much further by storm. We also hosted the class nineteen seventy-five for their fiftieth reunion this past weekend, and that kind of hurts my feelings a little bit because I was alive in nineteen seventy-five, and it makes me feel, you know, a bit senior. Current class of freshmen we're bringing in for this fall, it looks, well, our deposits on May one were two hundred and fifty-four. It's a little bit smaller than the class we brought in last year, but we do believe the, you know, the least of statistics from this particular class are a bit stronger academically, not, not, not to, not to cast an aspersion on the, on the young men who'll be sophomores next year, but we're excited about the, about those young men. We also have what we refer to oftentimes as OMRs, old men returning. Oftentimes, we'll have a student to take leave of absence, to, to be asked to, to take a leave of absence sometimes, and we have readmits that come in every year. So it looks like we'll have something along the, along the order of two hundred and seventy-five new students in the fall. Many of you may know, we're in the middle of our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary preparation this November the tenth. If we have any Marines here in the room, do we have any Marines? Our founding day and the Marine Corps founding day is the same day, November the tenth, seventeen seventy-five. So we are in the, in the middle, not only of, of celebrating two hundred and fifty years, but we're also in the middle of a comprehensive fundraising campaign that you may have heard some about. There'll be multiple opportunities to celebrate and to hear lectures and different things over the course of the next year, and that will culminate with a, with a big celebration in April of twenty twenty-six. We're also involved with, in, in addition to that, or in, in concert with that two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, there's a lot of construction that has gone on and that continues to go on at Hampton Sydney. I want to say, and I think I have thanked this board before, but I'll reiterate thanks to the IDA of the county for helping us with a couple of bond deals over the time that I've been out there. The first one in the, in the very end of twenty eighteen that allowed us to build the, the Grove Residence Hall complex, and then another one in the summer of twenty twenty-two that allowed us basically to renovate most of our, the rest of our housing stock. Over the, over the last seven-plus years, we've done over a hundred and forty million dollars worth of capital construction projects on campus, and there were a lot of them that were overdue. When we, when we were trying desperately to recruit young men to come to our campus, you have to sell their moms, and if a mom goes into a dorm room and the dorm room doesn't look exactly like mom thinks it should, then we got an uphill struggle. Just about every dormitory space on our campus has now been renovated or built brand-new since twenty eighteen. So there's, we've had a lot of work to do there. I want to thank, again, thank the IDA. I also want to thank your building official, Philip Moore. Been dynamite to work with. We're in the middle now of the demo, we've finished up the demolition and beginning to, to renovate Gilmer Hall. Gilmer, some of you may know, was our former science building, which was basically replaced by the Poly Science Center, which is on the corner of Via Sacra and College Road. Gilmer's been sitting dormant for the last three years. That's going to be the home for government, foreign affairs, and econ, and we're going to have, there'll be a trading room there. Our, our Tiger Fund Investment Club will have the Bloomberg terminals. There'll be a, a room with about twenty-four Bloomberg terminals, so it's, it's going to be a nice, nice addition to that part of our curriculum, and we're excited about those prospects. One other thing that I'll say, the, the assistance that the IDA has lent to us has enabled us to renovate some of these buildings, and we're the beneficiaries of just about, well, once Gilmer's complete, we'll be the beneficiaries of about twelve million dollars in Department of Historic Resources historic tax credits. So without the county's assistance at the IDA, a good chunk of that twelve million dollars might not have come to us. Finally, this summer, we've got ninety students studying abroad. Oxford University, we have a Virginia program at Oxford. We'll also have students in England, excuse me, in France, Germany, and Spain. I hope that they, they, they gain quite a bit of culture so that when they come back, they'll behave themselves. We, we, we certainly understand that boys are often boys. Most often, they're going to be boys, but we, we, we appreciate the, the partnership and the fact that our, our, our school resides within the bound, boundaries of Prince Edward County. We're thankful for the partnership and the collaboration that we have. If our, if our boys don't behave and the, and the department is not what it should be, you know who to call, but I, I am, I'm very pleased. We, we don't, we don't have too many incidents. We've, I think they're, they're, as, as we've worked very hard to be a little more diligent in, in the students that we bring in, I think behavior has, has been less and less and less of an issue. So we hope that, I don't, really not superstitious, I'll knock on wood as I say that, just the same. We hope that the nine hundred and forty-odd students that we'll have on campus this year will be terrific, terrific citizens to Prince Edward County. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then the town of Farmville, Scott Davis.
Mr. Chairman, board, Mr. Stanley, thank you for having me this evening. It's been a little while. It's supposed to be quarterly, but I got a little nervous about some of your public hearings, and I pushed this off a few minutes, so.
Don't be scared. Come on up, Scott.
It was all about the wait time, Mr. Emmerich. Just to give you some updates about what's happening in the town and, and looking forward, we've awarded our yearly paving contract to Colony Construction. We'll be doing about a million dollars in paving work the first part of June. It consists of, most streets are north of East Third Street, so just to name a few instead of all of them, because there's many, because they're small of amounts, distance-wise of those streets, North South Street, North Bridge Street, Halon Avenue, Second Street, North Virginia Street, and then we're going to move on over from East Third and hit South Bridge Street and South Virginia Street. As I said, that's the first part of June, get that done by the end of the fiscal year. Our splash pad will open on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, for Memorial Day weekend, and go through the summer and close right after Labor Day. Tomorrow night, town council will hold its public hearing on the. after Labor Day. Tomorrow night, Town Council will hold its public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget. The total budget is $43.3 million. The general fund is approximately 3.3 million. The street maintenance fund is 2.6 million. The water fund is 3.2 million. The sewer is 2.7 million. Transportation, which is the Farmville area bus, 1.2 million, and the airport is 380,000. Just to give you some examples, the biggest thing that's really great for us, I think, is we will be going to get, for our first time ever on our own, without through another entity, our first credit rating through Moody's and Standard and Poor's, and issue a general obligation bond on our own. And that general obligation bond will be $16 million. And that is to renovate and expand our fire station, to have the room to grow, but also for the people that are already there, that we're bringing in as full-time firefighters, but also our dedicated volunteers that are still an important part of our fire department. This will also include the purchase of a new ladder truck. The next ladder truck is can take anywhere between three to five years in construction. And so it's the current one is 20 years old now. And so hopefully by the time we get it, it'll last, even though we just had to put a new motor in it, it'll last us a little bit longer, and we'll we'll have another one to for the community. We are adding one more full-time firefighter this year that'll allow us to actually have enough staff to have at least one person 24 hours a day in the station to respond. So that's been our goal, was to gradually get to that point. And in the future, we're going to do a look for grant funding to do a study on on actual staffing, and that'll help us hopefully get a safer grant, which is through the federal government, where they supply a certain, based on your study, a number of employees. They pay for those employees for three years, and then after that, it would be on the town to continue that. And so it's a good way to grow your area of resources in fire without having the upfront cost all at one time, and you can build it in over time. Obviously, we're continuing with our five police cars a year. This should be coming up to where we will have replaced a whole fleet after this year, and then upgrading different equipment in public works, water and sewer. We should have a bid going out for our restrooms, where they'll have changing areas out at the splash pad by the end of this month, the first part of June, which will be needed for that area now that there's a playground, the splash pad, and those things out there. We're in the midst of updating our website, so it's in it every three to five years, so it's being updated. We I just hired a new public works director. As you know, Robin Atkins, who's been with us for almost 44 years, retired. He has come back to help us out for a little bit and is is going to help get the new director acclimated to the area and also the things that have happened over these 40 some years with him there. Stephen Edwards is coming to us from Dinwiddie County. He's previously worked also in the city of Hopewell and city of Colonia Heights. So he starts the first part of June. Well. The the town will begin also. It's it's five years since we adopted our comprehensive plans. Every five years, the state code states that you will review your comprehensive plan. And so the council will be reviewing that over the next several months, and will determine whether there's a major rewrite again, or whether we just make changes to it. During this, we're also going to look at making the whole town a urban development area, a UDA. I'm sure Mr. Stanley has shared what that is with all of you. It's a it's not anything really to do necessarily with zoning. It's more for transportation purposes. And I'm looking at you, Scott, because we're going to need some help from VDOT. In that it's especially important for us, the Town of Farmville and the county of Prince Edward, in that it will help us be more competitive in the smart scale project, and more specifically for us to hopefully in the future, do something with the East Third Street interchange that would be very beneficial for all of us in that side of the Town of Farmville economically to be developed. We actually have a construction meeting with Chipotle this week, so hopefully we'll start seeing some ground being broken. You know that Sheets is tearing down their buildings, so we'll be having construction meetings with them soon and building right back in the same place. And then we'll be meeting soon with VDOT consultants and VDOT on the roundabout project that'll be going out to bid in the near future, looking at the betterments that the town will need to take responsibility for. Within the roundabout, VDOT will, if there has to be moved, different facilities within the the roundabout project, they'll move those, but they won't make any betterments or enhancements. And so, as you know, Oak Street and High Street, some fairly old infrastructure that we'd like to take care of that during that period of time while that's under construction. And so we'll be having those meetings soon so that we can get the final plans and move that project forward. And I'm open to any questions from the board.
Questions? Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Thank you for having me. I keep my update brief because I know we have a public hearing with VDOT as well right after this. The the debris pile on 460, I get a lot of questions about it. It's currently advertised for bids. A bid opening is scheduled for Monday at 2:30 PM. So you can go on our portal and put a bid in if you're a qualified contractor, if you're in the debris reduction business. We are still cleaning up some brush, specifically on the southern and western side of the county. We've started a new debris pile that's closer to where we're working. So once once we complete, we'll end up doing the same thing, putting that one out for bid, and we'll get it reduced as well. Bridge crew work still ongoing on Millbank Road, Route 639. That's scheduled to complete in June. We've been patching asphalt ahead of our surface treatment, latex, and plant mix schedules that work. Our schedule work happens every year, and that's contractors are all telling us they're coming in in August. So we we prepare the roads that are broken up ahead of them so that we get the most life out of the the new asphalt. We replaced a pipe on Aspen Hill Road last week. We did it one day. We we knew the transfer site was closed that day, and we closed the road down, replaced the whole pipe. It was a great project. We got it done very quickly and even got the road paved back over top of it. The three rural rustic projects that are going to be worked on this year are starting to get going. We'll be cut and brush, then and we'll also replace any pipes that are failing on them. And then we'll do the ditches, and then we'll add base stone, and then we'll do surface treatment on top. Will be done before it gets cold this fall. The Rice Creek, coming from the Red Shop side down to the bridge, Junction Canal, and Quail Crossing. We did some tree limbing work on Roadies Road and Prospect Avenue. I had some complaints come in on those. We got those taken care of. Then we've been handling our normal work orders as always. And then I also wanted to say that Brian Locker, my land use assistant, and I are going to be going out in the Hampton College area and taking a look at Rob Lane, Massey Lane, and Oliver Lanes. I think they were constructed years ago, but they didn't have enough development on them for VDOT to take them into the system. So from what I'm hearing, there's been more and more houses built back in there. So we're going to take another look at those and see if we can take them in, make them part of our network. So that's all I can prepare to speak on tonight, but I could answer any questions.
For Semen Tree Fork, we're.
For Semen Tree Fork, right?
The trees are just hanging down.
Okay.
They cut the question back. Look at that and see. I had someone call about it.
I got two, three things, Scott.
Okay, yes, sir.
At McDonald Heights Road, where the pavement had broke off, that has settled on down. They need to go back and level it back up.
Okay.
On Singleton, on the Fire Fork side, as you start down the hill to the creek, the pavement is breaking up. And I'm not sure it's where that spring is. I don't think it is.
Okay.
It's a pretty big thing. And I had a call on the Heights School Road, and I don't know what the address mark is, but if you go on toward Hampton, there's a fence on the right side that's full of cedar trees.
Yeah, and the opposite side of the road, I think, has Bradford Pairs. I wrote that this week. We're going to get that cut back.
I think it trimmed it back 34 years ago, but it's it's come back out.
Gotcha. Yeah, we're we're putting that on the schedule. We saw it this week. We're going to take care of that. Thank you, sir.
Scott, I've got some, I mean signage, road signs, like numbered roads. Do y'all straighten those?
Yeah, we do from time to time. If they're if they're leaning, we'll straighten them.
You come off 15 to Mount Pleasant, that sign need to be straightened. You get at the end of that, at 360, that sign need to be straightened. If you go 360 east, all of them need straightened.
Okay. Well, we'll just have to go through, check check for leaning sign.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, it's been like that for months and months.
Okay.
And it.
I think Sterfow's got them.
Probably is. But it's been there for months, and it needs to be corrected.
Thank you, sir.
But I prefer you get debris on the side of the road first.
Okay. Yeah, we'll prioritize that.
Scott, Mount Moriah Road, check the check the debris if you would please, sir.
Okay.
Scott, I have a question about the Hampton Sydney area.
Yes, ma'am.
One of my constituents was telling me about the beautification of a roundabout area in another county. I won't call the county's name, but he was saying how flowers are planted. It's just a beautiful era. How much land does VDOT own in that area? Because I was wondering if that could be a horticultural project for the students of Prince Edward County, maybe at the beginning of the year. And if it were, if they went out there to work, would they be, would they have to be supervised? What would have to take place for that to happen?
Well, the student part of it, I would work with the school, see what age groups you're talking about first.
Whether it would be high school.
High school.
Yeah, high school.
That would probably be possible. Our adopt a highway program requires children to be 10 years old, but they're also, they have to be supervised.
Right. Oh, no, these are high school students.
Yeah. So if the high school students would be, we'd have to look into that. But the the landscaping itself could easily be done through a landscape maintenance agreement.
Okay.
And it calls out certain types of plannings that you have to use that stay low lying, so site distance won't be affected.
I would like to talk to you about that.
Yeah, we can. We can set up a meeting.
Okay. And the grass needs to be cut out there badly.
I knew somebody would. It's getting to be that time. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I guess I sit back down.
We'll open the public hearing. I'll do a little info.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, we have, it looks like, three public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first public hearing is to consider VDOT's six-year plan. In accordance with Section 32.2331 of the Code of Virginia, a joint county VDOT public hearing will be held for the purpose of receiving public comments on the proposed county's secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2031, and on the secondary system construction budget for FY '26. Mr. Frederick will be here, and I don't know whether, beginning it, you want to go through the proposed plan or not?
I'd be happy to.
If you'd like, let's let him read through it, then we get open the hearing, Mr. Chair.
All righty. So we did some good work together in our work session, and I went through our six-year plan budget, and then we talked about some of the roads that I'm about to read through now. So the three of the roads that I mentioned in my update are the first three on the list, and the six-year plan kind of works like a pipeline, where most times roads are added to the end of it. And we just go, as we construct them, we go through them in order. So it takes us six years to get to the last ones I'll go through. First three, Rice Creek Road, 1.2 miles long, coming from the Red Shop Road End down to the bridge, 1.2 miles. That's Route 647. Next on the list, Junction Canal Road, Route 682, from Route 671 to Route 668. That's 2.1 miles long. Route 611, Quail Crossing Road, from Route 613 to Route 612. That's 2.1 miles long. And then next year's work will start on Lowman Road. We're going to pick up where the the section that's already been completed is, 0.5 miles east of Route 15, and we're going to go to Route 630, Maheron Road. Next on the list, Featherfin Road, Route 625, go from the Appomattox County line to Route 609, Peaks Road. That's three miles long. Route 668, Bell Road. We're going to go from Route 667 to Route 682. That one's 3/10 of a mile. Route 632, Schultz Mill, we're going to go 0.69 miles west of Route 696 to 0.4 miles west of Route 696. Route 703, East Pamplin Road, from 8/100ths of a mile north of Business Route 460 to Business Route 460, and that's 6/10ths of a mile long. And then Route 628, Mountain Creek Road, from 2.13 miles north of Route 632 to 2.56 miles north of Route 632. That's section 0, 0.4 miles long, 4/10ths. And then that takes us to the end of the list right there. The last two boxes on on the list are just cost centers that we have open and for preliminary engineering work for the six-year plan. So now that I've read through it, I guess, is there a public comment for the plan? So I sit back down again. Yes, sir. Thank you. It feels like the first time every.
Our Mr. Chairman.
Now we open a public hearing.
Anybody wish to speak on the proposed six-year plan?
Go ahead.
We're going to take a vote first.
Go ahead.
Close it up.
Get myself together.
I'll say banged out. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the six-year plan.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Stu Baz Watson?
Yes.
Stu Baz Jones?
Yes.
Stu Baz Jinko, yes. Stu Baz Jones?
Yes.
Stu Baz Town?
I got a comment.
Mountain Creek, all the way out to Lee Mountain Road. What's the mileage?
On Mountain Creek, we have a section of that. 0.4. I guess when that was added to the list last year.
Yeah, what I, next year, we, no money was this year, right?
I say.
But I I want to make sure we get the road touting gravel all the way through, but .4 miles, not going to take it to the even to the creek.
Right. Yeah, we we, I think what happened when you guys worked on it last year is you just added any.
Yeah.
Add to it.
I just want to, I just want to make sure we complete, get the road completed all the way through. Okay, yes.
Next public hearing, Mr. Chair, is a special use permit from CEP. Next public hearing, Mr. Chair, is a special use permit, um, from CEP Solar. Um, and I'm covering for, uh, Mr. Love this evening. His daughter's graduating from college, and, uh, he's out of town. So the county has received an application request by Oak Lane Solar Farm LLC for a special use permit to construct and operate a five-megawatt acre solar energy facility and land totaling one hundred ninety-four point eight plus or minus acres, denoted as tax map parcels, one fifteen, section six, parcel four, one fifteen, A fifty-five, and one fifteen, A fifty-nine, located, uh, on Patrick Henry Highway, U.S. Route three sixty, near its intersection with Campbell Crossing Road, State Route six twenty-eight, which is zoned agricultural conservation, or A one. Public hearing notice was published in the April thirty and May second editions of the Farmville Herald. Now, the list of joining properties and the sample letters sent to each along the, with the letters sent to Lindenburg County can be found in attachments three and four. The purpose of the special use permit is to allow for the location of an energy, solar energy facility. The applicant has stated that the proposed facility will not be seen nor heard, and will not impact adjacent properties. Order quality will be addressed according to the Virginia Stormwater Management Permit Requirements, and the site will not generate any significant amount of traffic, with the main traffic occurring temporarily during the construction phase, estimated to be nine months from start until completion. Planning Commission held a public hearing on March eighteen, twenty twenty-five, uh, where there were letters submitted and citizens that spoke who were either in support or in opposition to the project. The Commission deemed the proposal to be substantially in accord with the twenty fourteen Conference of Plan, and unanimously recommended approval with conditions that are included in your packet, um, and forwarded the requests to the Board of Supervisors for public hearing. Attachment five is a list of potential conditions that's recommended by the Planning Commission at the March meeting, with additional proffered supplemental conditions by the applicant. So in your packet, you've got, uh, the special use permit application letter to the board, the notice of public hearing, listing of adjacent properties, the sample letter sent to the joining properties, potential conditions, and an excerpt of the draft minutes of the March eighteen meeting. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Harry Kingry and, uh, CEP Solar team if they would like to make a presentation prior to the start of the public hearing.
Do we have a remote to control slides?
Sean, y'all have the remote back there? Okay.
Okay, great. Uh, that'd be fine. You can go ahead and do that now, if you'd like. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tyson Ut. I'm a co-founder and manager of Commonwealth Energy Partners and CEP Solar. And really, just wanted to speak at the outset here, again, just to convey our appreciation for the work we've been doing to date and look forward to continue doing, uh, with Prince Edward County. We are a Virginia-based small business, and our purpose is to partner with landowners, communities, and customers to deliver high-quality projects for the Commonwealth. Virginia is now the largest importer of electricity in the United States, and this is a good site where we're able to set back from the roads, uh, be out of sight, as it says, and, uh, quiet once operational, to be able to produce the lowest cost of new electricity today. So we really do appreciate the work and the diligence that's gone into this, uh, the engagement with the community and the feedback that we've taken to heart to make improvements, uh, since the Planning Commission's recommendation, and, uh, just continue to look forward to working with Prince Edward County. Uh, before I hand it over to Harry, who will share many more details on the project itself, I just wanted to note that we have, uh, Don Giesig with us tonight, our Director of Permitting, uh, Karen Cohen with us from Project Council Perspective in Gentry Lock, and Jillian Steckley also with us from Timmins Group with our engineering support. So, uh, yeah, we're all available to answer questions or concerns if they come up. Uh, but again, appreciate your time and, and, uh, look forward to working with you on this project. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Thanks for your time. Uh, if I could request, can we do full screen on the slide when you get a moment, um, and go to the next one? Okay, that's all we got. Well, there's some maps. They might be a little bit small, but, um, yeah, we can go ahead and go to the next one. Okay, so, uh, we'll start with kind of a, uh, you know, a, a planning perspective. There, so there's lots of factors that go into siting of a, uh, solar facility, from the, the land type, transmission, interconnection. Uh, one of the most important is conformity with the comp plan, uh, compliance with the zoning ordinance. Uh, so this project aligns with multiple goals in the current comp plan. It aligns with goals in the, uh, comp plan that's under consideration as well. Uh, those are pertaining to land use, uh, economic goals, and, um, uh, environmental as well. It received, uh, twenty-two thirty-two approval from the Planning Commission, as well as a recommendation for approval. Um, the zoning ordinance in Prince Edward, in all counties, they're put in place to implement the comprehensive plan. So, uh, your alternative energy zoning ordinance specifically encourages alternative energy resources while limiting the negative impacts. So we've got a whole slew of conditions and areas where we're, uh, exceeding the requirements in order to, uh, again mitigate those, uh, those impacts. Next slide, please. Um, so I'll, I'll touch on our environmental and cultural due diligence. We, uh, performed a variety of desktop studies and, um, found that, you know, there's no known threat or endangered species on site, no known cultural resources. Uh, the real takeaway from this slide is that we are going to be, uh, coordinating with, during the state-level permitting process, coordinating with the, uh, the appropriate agencies to mitigate or avoid any, any, uh, risks to these, uh, these resources. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're getting to the slides with a little bit more detail, a little smaller font. So you don't need to, to read it necessarily. I'll run through the, uh, the high level. So, uh, this is, we're seeking permit for a project up to five megawatts. The estimated construction date is twenty twenty-seven, um, uh, planned to operate for, uh, forty years. Uh, related to the property, it's in the Lee District of Prince Edward, across three privately-owned parcels. As was mentioned by Mr. Stanley, these parcels totaled to a hundred ninety-five acres. Um, we're not using all of that for the solar facility. We estimate that we'll need about fifty acres for the solar facility. So, uh, a hundred forty-five acres are gonna be reserved for, uh, as you'll see in a moment, commercial timber, wildlife, landowner use. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's our preliminary site plan. We'll, we'll spend a minute or two here. Um, again, the whole area is kind of surrounded by a black and blue dash line. It's a hundred ninety-five acres. Uh, once we remove the setbacks and wetlands and all, all, um, elements like that, we're essentially evaluating about a hundred ten acres for the, the site. And then we, the estimated panel location, you can see in the dark blue, is, is about fifty acres. So, uh, right off the bat, I'll point out, Route three sixty is kind of that diagonal line in the top-left corner there. Um, you can see the panels are set back from the road pretty significantly. Uh, we are, you know, we've, wanna be respectful of the, the feedback we've heard from Planning Commission, Board, uh, and, uh, community members. We know that visibility from the road's important, so we went ahead and just put the panels on the other side of the creek there. Um, and on top of that, we, you know, we, it's this red-hatched area. We've, uh, committed the project to, uh, growing commercial timber, timber there. So that, um, you know, retains the land use in silviculture. It also acts as a, you know, significant vegetative buffer from the, from the road when, when it's grown up. I also want to note, there's no panels on that middle parcel, so you can see there's kind of a gap there, that, that light blue area. With respect to entrances, we've got our primary entrance, the permanent entrance for the life of the project and construction is off of Route three sixty. Um, we also have a secondary entrance that's non-construction, is what we've sort of defined it, but it's really, um, it, coming in from the east along, uh, Holly Lane. Our landowners have existing access there, so that's where they're gonna access their property, and we've proposed it for, um, emergency and operations access. We've gotten preliminary feedback from BDOT, uh, on these entrances, and they'll be designed in accordance with those requirements. Uh, the point of interconnection is planned for along Route three sixty. Uh, the, this project connects directly to the distribution lines, so there's no substation needed. The power just goes directly into those lines and, and serves load in the area first. And from a buffer perspective, like a vegetative buffer, but the proposed project area is totally surrounded by mature woodlands. Um, so we don't anticipate, and there's minim, there's no visibility from public right-of-ways, minimal visibility, uh, from, from the neighbors. And, um, we're still proposing some vegetation along Route three sixty. Do you wanna go to the next slide, please? Okay, so this is a little bit of a zoom in there. You can see the red-hatched area. That's where the commercial timber's gonna be grown. Uh, you can see that bright green line along Route three sixty, so that's where we're proposing some vegetative buffer. Um, and just a couple more kind of high-level points about this. There are no homes within six hundred feet of any of the proposed, uh, panel area, so two football fields away from any panels. Uh, the panels are about five hundred feet from the road. So again, this is a, you know, a pretty secluded project with minimal visual impact. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, these are a few visual simulations. We'll run through these real quick. This is the site entrance, um, at existing conditions. Go to the next slide. So this is at planting. This is where that visual buffer is proposed, uh, where the, the project entrance is, next slide. And then this is at maturity. So, um, the only thing not shown here is the commercial timber that would be behind it. We can go to the next slide. And then this is a little bit further down Route three sixty. There's about a twelve-foot berm, so no, no visibility there. Okay, next slide. Okay, excuse me. Um, we understand that there are risks with these projects. There are also concerns from the neighbors, from stakeholders in the community, and, you know, tho, those items are not always covered in, uh, the county ordinance or the conditions that are provided to us. So we want to hold ourselves to a higher standard, so that we sufficiently address those concerns and those risks. And, um, these, basically a list of some of the voluntary things that we've done to address those, and these were added based on known risks in the industry. I think everyone knows that erosion is an issue. There are practices that we can hold these, uh, practices and standards that we can hold these new projects to, to prevent that, uh, prevent those events from happening. So based on known industry risks and community feedback, they're related to, you know, the environmental protection, aesthetics of the project, maintaining soil quality. So I'll just run through a few of them. Um, in the design bucket, we've got, uh, silvicultural use incorporated. We already talked about that. We've got an increased buffer from wetlands and streams. Um, we are modeling the solar panels as impervious surfaces. So some of y'all may know what that means, but it's basically, uh, when we design, do the stormwater design for the project, model the predicted runoff, um, and you size your stormwater facilities accordingly. This is basically a much more conservative approach to make sure that those stormwater facilities are sized appropriately to manage the, uh, the stormwater after the, the change in land use. We've got inverters set back three hundred feet from property lines. Uh, construction, so early installation of vegetative buffers, we're gonna do that at the beginning of construction, not the end. Uh, no more than fifty percent of the site will be disturbed at any point. So this, this is an important one, because, again, when you disturb the land, that's when there's the risk of erosion. And some of these very large projects go out there and they just denude the whole landscape, um, a hundred-plus acres at a time, and they get rained on, they have an erosion event. We're not allowed to disturb more than fifty percent of the property, so, or of the project area. So that, you know, that totals maybe twenty acres, uh, give or take. So that's, you know, a much more manageable, uh, acreage to, to deal with, um, and to contain. Uh, there's also local oversight, so Prince Edward, uh, is its own stormwater management authority, so a little bit closer, uh, closer to the project. Uh, we're minimizing grading and cutting fills. We're also maintaining topsoil on site in a healthy condition and, uh, redistributing it in a timely manner. So this is, you know, be good for long-term soil quality, also good for getting that ground cover established that's needed to, uh, maintain erosion. And then decommissioning, so we're, uh, you know, restabilizing, restabilizing the site at the end of the decommissioning process to prevent, uh, erosion and sediment issues. Okay, next slide. Uh, there's been a lot of, it's, these next two slides are, are based on topics that have come up in multiple contexts, so we just wanted to kind of share some information here. Solar is a well-known technology. It was invented in nineteen fifty-four, seventy years ago. Uh, it's used on over four million homes in the U.S. We, we put it on top of or near our schools, over seven thousand schools. So we're very comfortable with it in these applications, and, uh, basically, we know how it works. We know the characteristics of how it performs, and we know that it's a safe, emission-free, uh, form of energy generation. Uh, from a construction perspective, uh, there is basically a sandwich of materials. There's a back sheet and tempered glass, and all of the, you know, the solar cells and a couple other layers are sandwiched in between there, and it's all held in place with an aluminum frame, so it's waterproof. Um, there's nothing inside of the panels that are gonna get outside of the panels, uh, when they're operating normally. Uh, they're designed to withstand, uh, inclement weather, severe weather events, and most technologies are ninety-five percent recyclable by weight, so very familiar materials, aluminum, glass, silicone. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, domestic manufacturing. So, uh, domestic manufacturing panels has increased significantly over the past few years. It's increased eightfold, I think. So, uh, and recently, uh, you know, earlier this year, we actually, uh, began producing more solar panels domestically than the domestic demand. So this is all to just say, you know, uh, the industry is trending towards domestic procurement of solar panels. We're now the third-largest, uh, solar panel producer or manufacturer in the world, and, uh, we've been onshoring, or the solar industry has been onshoring manufacturing and supply chain for, for several years now. Next slide, just got a few more here. Uh, this is the, the county tax revenue picture. Um, we, we estimate that the, uh, the project will increase the tax over the life of the project from about fifty thousand dollars to about seven hundred twenty-five-ish thousand dollars. And that's due to, uh, increased real estate taxes, the, uh, solar revenue share, um, that's in place of the M and T tax. You all adopted that a while ago, and then the voluntary payments that we've, uh, proffered through the siting agreement. Next slide. Uh, it's not just tax revenue. There are, uh, sort of less direct, um, uh, economic benefits, but real nonetheless. So there's a, a one-time pulse of economic activity during construction, so a lot of activity during construction, and then there's, uh, kind of a more sustained, um, uh, more sustained economic activity throughout the operation of the project. Next slide. So we've, um, we've done a lot of community outreach for this project. We held a meeting in December, uh, of last year. It was well-attended. We had some productive conversations, and we've continued our outreach to, um, uh, to folks since then, those that have expressed interest and really, you know, sought their input, and we've made adjustments based on that input. And I also want to note that we're involved outside of, you know, this context. We, uh, we volunteer, we, um, contribute to local organizations, Rotary Club and Faces. So, you know, we're, we're, uh, we're trying to be, we're guests in your community. We're trying to be, um, good guests. Uh, okay, next slide. Okay, this is the last slide, and, uh, you know, the, the big takeaway here is about kind of the benefits, both, you know, direct and tangible and kind of bigger picture. Uh, you know, this project is gonna generate affordable and emission-free electricity that will diversify, um, our energy portfolio in Virginia. So we need to generate more energy in Virginia. Tyson mentioned, you know, we import thirty percent of our, uh, our energy. It's expensive, and solar is part of the solution to manage the cost of energy there. Um, it also generates environmental and ecological benefits. We touched on that. Increases tax revenue, uh, creates public health benefits. You know, every bit of energy produced by solar is not produced by traditional forms of energy generation that, you know, uh, release airborne pollution, so clean air means healthier people. And lastly, uh, land banking. So this is an, uh, you know, it's, it's an option to prevent more intensive forms of development. It's, you know, maintains open space, it's relatively low impact, and can ult, ultimately be removed. Uh, that's all I've got for now. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ed?
Sure. First of all, just a couple of general things. Statement you made just a minute ago about land use, the timber that you're going to leave in land use, said there was some timber there that would be in land use. Prince Edward County doesn't have land use and timberland to begin with, so that's not necessarily a benefit. One question to you. You said that panels were made with 95% recyclable according to weight. Majority of it is glass, is that correct?
I think, yeah. Most, I don't know what the breakout is between glass, aluminum, and silicone, but yeah, that's, I believe it's mostly glass.
Do you know of any glass recycling facility anywhere east of Mississippi?
I know that there's about eight solar recycling facilities throughout the East Coast and Midwest. A new one just opened up in Florida. I can't name them or tell you where they are, but I think there's about 20 across the U.S., too.
Also, on your, I guess that's, when your, your application on page 117, if you have a copy of that, do you have a copy of the? Might be page 14 of yours. It's 117 of mine. I don't know exactly how yours is listed, sir.
That's the conditions, I think, David.
That's the conditions. Talking about, just about the surety bond, first of all. It's under decommissioning, is what it's under.
Paragraph 45 of the conditions.
Okay, yes. Surety must be provided.
Yep.
Correct. With C, surety must be provided. Goes on to say that it cannot be, under no circumstances, be withdrawn or canceled before the decommission activity is required. Drop on down about four more, about four more lines there. It starts talking about how that you can revoke it. Well, if it can't be revoked, how in the world are you making a way to revoke it? It says surety bond shall require that the county be notified 30 days prior to cancellation or alteration of the bond. Three sentences before that, it says that in no way can it be. So how was, how was that?
This is actually the condition that we're placed on the permits.
Correct, correct. But I'm asking, I'm asking for everybody's sake that that's the way that is, is that with the decommissioning, first of all, on page 116, 133, 41, 42, and 44, it talks about how many days that you have to, let me back up there. It's also on 133. So on page 116 and 133, I guess that's both the same. This is to the board, not to you, sir. We're allowing them 60 days to tell us if they sell or change. Is that correct, Doug?
Ownership.
I believe that's correct. Now, what, are you still on 45, David?
I'm on, I'm on page 116.
Okay.
Number 41 and 41, 42.
Any change of party responsible for decommissioning of the facility or change any part of the contact information shall be reported within 60 days of the change. So if y'all sell the project, which has happened on the location, other projects, y'all have to notify us within 60 days, right?
So this is, this is not to you, sir. This is to the board. The board's allowing them 60 days to notify us as to who owns it? Is that the way we have that written?
I believe so, sir.
Okay. That's all my questions for right now.
Can we jump back to the production slide? Can you talk a little bit? I didn't see.
The one that had the, it was broken out to different.
It was a bar graph with exponential growth. Can you talk a little bit about the onshoring? Was there a technological advancement or a breakthrough that kind of facilitated that increase? Or was it?
One, there you go.
Was it a question of funding from the federal level?
There are tax incentives in place to produce panels domestically. That is in part, part of the story. There's also been tariffs on solar panels for, since I believe 2018. So the move to onshore production and supply chains has been happening for a while in the solar industry. So it's, you know, tax incentives, tariffs, there's a variety of ways to onshore manufacturing.
Sure, sure. But not necessarily a technological advancement.
Not to my knowledge. Thank you.
You have to give me a moment. I'll explain my way of thinking. Recently, we got a nice Wawa station. I'm on the planning commission, I'm on the board. We asked multiple questions. One question that I never thought of, and nobody else did, all of a sudden, they're going to give away free car washes. And the vehicles are out of the driveway, down through the intersection, by the bypass. I would have liked to have known that upfront. We could have made arrangements to turn them and send them down another street. The other thing it's bringing to my point recently was a truck loaded with $800,000 worth of dimes on it that crashed and strode them right down the road. And I remember this officer sitting on the road with a tin can picking up dimes. Recently, I sent you a news article where a tornado went through a solar field. You recall that?
I do, yeah.
What in your plan do you have in place if a disaster like that happens? And the reason I'm asking is because we were with the weather people today. This morning, the first thing I saw on the news, nine out of every day of last month was a tornado risk in this country. They're getting worse. If we have one, how are we going to clean it up? Now, excuse me, we talked back and forth, but all this came to my mind tonight. And I thought to myself, you know, these things pull the post up into the grounds, destroyed the panels, it's like you went through there with a dozer and it strode for miles. How do we clean that up? Do you have a proposal in place to do that, if it happens to one of your facilities?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, first off, we have insurance, general liability insurance, and, you know, it's, I can't speak to the specifics of how it would be cleaned up. All I can do is kind of put that risk into, into context. And you mentioned nine tornadoes in the country per?
No, nine days of high risk of tornadoes.
Nine days of high risk across the whole of the U.S. Okay, so.
Today was one in Virginia.
So, you know, there are solar panels deployed across millions of acres in the U.S. And two of the states that have the most solar panel deployment see the most inclement weather, Texas and Florida. So, you know, I think that with that level of deployment in those areas, you are bound to have an event like that. And, you know, it's, all I can do is characterize it for Virginia. The likelihood of a tornado hitting a solar facility is very low. If you go on FEMA's Risk Index, so Federal Emergency Management Agency has a risk index where they basically characterize the risk of tornadoes, hurricanes, hail. Prince Edward County is low to relatively low for all of those risks or severe weather events. So, yeah, it's, given that level of deployment, it's bound to happen, and you're bound to read about it. But what you don't read about is the vast majority of projects that are, you know, just sitting in a field quietly generating electricity. And occasionally, you'll read about the project that withstood a hurricane and is powering its community while, you know, their neighbors are experiencing rolling blackouts.
Call it insurance, company.
That's part of it.
No plan.
I don't know if we got, it's, I can't speak to it. There's, I'm sure somebody knows how to do it.
Other questions? Public here, Mr. Chair. We're going with the project here now. Can you come up and state your name and where you live at? All right, first we have Byron Zane. That's enough, correct?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay.
Good evening, Board. I talked to y'all one time before on the Falkland Road project and the head net and the dress things. I just want to make it very clear, I'm totally against this project or any other ones that will come up in the county. They claim and they painted a pretty picture of things that's going to happen there. That spring or creek, if a tornado strikes or something, considerable water damage that will go and then flow back into the other creeks and stuff, just like the Falkland Road project, Bush River right on down. And all that's protected by the DEQ and zoned out. I live close enough, one of the panels go flying, I might catch it to my roof or house. They say you can't see it. I drive it every day and got to look at it. So I know Dernville, you'll be able to see, they can put as much cover as they want. And it's kind of also gives a red flag to the community, we're supposed to have a rural area, and people traveling up and down 360, all of a sudden, they see, oh, well, look at a nice old solar field. You know, I wouldn't want to look at it. I despise everyone I see anywhere I go. And I'll just kind of leave it like that. So I hope y'all just tell it to go away, and I would appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I've got a question. How far you live from that site?
I live on Maran Road, one half a mile. And so it's one size up. So I would say crow fly, maybe mile and a half, two, the most. But I drive by it every day, and I know that property. And it would look a whole lot better as an apple orchard or strawberries than solar panels. Thank y'all.
Uh-huh, thanks. Mr. Tabitha? Laura, just state your name and where you're from.
Hi, Tabitha Zown, Brian Zown's daughter-in-law, Lee District. Just wanted to reiterate what, I know, Mr. Gillum, you were there at the planning commission meeting. They've done research about the property area, but has the county, has the county followed up with the research on DEQ about where the watershed follows through from this property? That is going to be affected from it. When you affect these, this land, even at half the percentage at a time, it is still going to, the runoff is going to hit these creeks. And these creeks are hitting core samples that are 2% in the state of Virginia that is rare property. And that's what you guys need to think. This is a great county that has very high percentages of rare property in this county. And you guys need to take that in effect. Also, I want to point out that the project manager here has not answered most of your questions that you've asked. He doesn't have answers to them. So that's pretty scary that that's your project manager for this project. So take that in effect, that if he can't even answer your questions, to make sure that you guys are sure about this, how's the project actually going to be run? Thank you.
Excuse me a minute. Where do you say you live?
I'm Brian Zown's father-in-law, I'm daughter-in-law in Lee District, off Maran Road.
And how far are you from this project?
I live in Powhatan.
Oh, you live in Powhatan.
But yes, I come up here, I, my husband is heir to his estate, and we are up here all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I spent my Mother's Day at his farm because that property is so important to us.
Scott Zown, I'm Brian's son. I mean, because there would be all the runoff and things and seeing it. I drive up and down there. I don't want to look at it. And how would they take care of it if something happened like this man brought up? So that's all I know. They're an asshole, so thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak to you.
What's your address now?
Ann Bowman. I live in Lee District on Mount Pleasant Road. I'm a few miles away from this project. And I hear so much concern about the runoff and the water from a project. But this project, they're going, when they do the construction, and then they're going to plant grass, and they're going to be supervised and checked on. What about when somebody comes next to you and they cut 400 acres of trees? And the destruction that does, and the ruts in the roads and the cars and the creek and everything in that? Now, you talk about runoff and what's happening, and we've seen it. And nobody's done anything to correct it or anything. There are ruts, and there's washes, and there's gullies forming. But this would be supervised. These people are going to build something there, they want to make a profit, there's going to be taxes paid into our county to help our schools be built and the projects that we need to be doing, done. It will give the people, the landowners, some income from their farm. And yet, he's telling you also, he's going to leave buffers, native trees, they're going to plant a few more where they need to. But these people that say that you just can't stand the sight of it, I think there are a whole lot of things that are worse than the sight of a solar panel. And many people are putting them on their own houses, in their own yards. They're looking at them every day because they're right there in their own yards. But I think Virginia needs a source of electricity. We're trying to grow. We're trying to get companies to come in here that are going to need the power. And we use more power all the time with all of our own gadgets and things. And Virginia has not been producing enough of their own electricity. We've been importing from other states for a long time. We need to step up and supply ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks. Okay, we got Brian Stefan. Take a better picture.
Brian Stefan, 6038 Patrick Henry Highway. My wife and I live on the property directly adjacent to this project. I'll just mention things and ask some questions. I'd rather have a blackout than have to deal with environmental issues of the nature you spoke of. As far as I know, the water runoff from all of this property flows into Mountain Creek. And I've been on the property a couple times when I'd had a dog that had left the property, our property. It's very hilly. I'm worried about the erosion from sediment, nutrients, pollutants. I'm worried about how are they going to, the construction entrance is going to be on 360. Are they going to cross Mountain Creek? Are they going to bridge it? Are they going to, how are they going to get over it and still keep it safe? I did find one article, I presented it in my written comments to the board, where there was a study done that said property values within a quarter mile of a solar site do decrease, and we're right beside the solar site. What is the remedy if something happens for the landowners, for the people downstream, for my other neighbors? If they change hands, if they sell, what assurance do we have that the covenants that are being made now will be followed through? Panels made in the U.S., just because that has increased doesn't mean this project will source U.S. panels. What about their sourcing? What about the subcontractors that are going to be used? I don't know if CEP has a division set aside for construction and a general contractor's I said in the proposal, there would be a refrigerator-type noise at the property line. I'm concerned about that, that 24/7, whenever the sun is up. I find it inconvenient that I would have to be outside whenever the sun is up in my yard and have to listen to a refrigerator hum. Is there going to be a 24/7 watchman on the property? Will he be patrolling the property? Will there be nighttime illumination of the site that I'll, that will be visible on our As far as I'm concerned... As far as, I know there's an aura of good feeling about solar, but anything that's produced has some type of waste involved. They have to extract the raw materials, they have to produce what they're making, all that takes energy. How much are we saving by this, when there's still consumption of energy in the manufacturing process and also the recycling process? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Lane Gunn?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Lane Gunn. I live in Charlotte County in Wileyburg. I'm here on behalf of the South Central Virginia Business Alliance. And, and we've been working with CEP and several other EPCs and developers, Dominion and, you know, Sawy UNESCO and several others, on these projects to try and educate the public and just basically bring local businesses to the forefront of every single one of these projects. And we work with CEP so that they utilize local businesses. So you're not dealing with somebody from out of state, parse your local contractors for your civil work, your electrical work, if there's one available, at least they have the opportunity at every single one of these projects. So you're not just employing somebody from out of state, you could actually be employing your neighbor for the duration of the construction. And when, just like the gentleman asked, what was the subcontractors that would be working on these projects? Howdy, I've built 11 of them. You know, that's one of our mainstays, we're right there in Charlotte County, we try to stay within two hours of our office. So our men live in Prince Edward, they live in Alphamatics, Maheron, which is where this project's gonna be. And I've got three guys that live there. This type of project sustains your local businesses. It's not just for hotels and rock quarries and gas stations. It's guys like me, companies like mine. You know, we have events where we invite board of supervisors, planning commissions, local businesses, we've got one in Prince Edward County on June 12th, y'all are welcome to come. Uh, we've got one this Thursday in Keysville. You know, but at the end of the day, we try to educate everybody about these projects. Because First Solar is one of the solar panel developers that started building your panels in the United States. They make a quality panel. I've seen them on the last five projects that we've built. You know, they've got tracking systems, they've got your standard systems that are, that are stationary, that, that non-tilt with the panels, and I'm not sure which ones that these guys are going with. But your tracking systems, there's 0 to 6 or 0 to 8% fall east to west, 0 to 12 north to south. All right? So you build your solar project like a train. You clear 30 feet, give or take, to get your silt fence up to contain your silt. Loggers don't do that, which is what the lady over there was talking about with, with soil runoff. We control it. Once we get the silt fence in, we get the ponds in, all your sediment basins and, and your erosion-controlled ditches. We get them seeded. Once the vegetation is established on those ditches, ponds, and other berms and measures, then we start clearing and grubbing the watershed above it. All silt is contained. We don't have runoff on these smaller projects. Your larger projects where they get out in front of themselves because they're not from Virginia and don't know the soil types, that's where they have problems. I appreciate your time and have a blessed evening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Robert Hawthorne with Judy?
Thank you. Good evening, board. It's been years, I guess, since I've been here. I was in Fairfax, speaking briefly to a bunch of real estate attorneys up there, when Alan Folks texted me and said, hey, can you come down and talk about our project here? I've known the Folks family for a long time. And I said, Alan, I don't know. He said, my sister Judy's gonna be there. I said, okay. So, so then I, you know, I get out in that Northern Virginia traffic, driving in the rain, you know, it's kinda, kinda depressing. And I remember, well, this is a CEP project. CEP is one of the best organizations that you can affiliate with when it comes to these small-scale solar projects, even larger scale. And so, and I got to see my mentor and good friend and excellent stellar local government attorney, Karen Cohen. So I'm all excited again. And then, and then I remember, oh yeah, David and Cannon will be there. David used to whip me in the forensics arena, Cannon, at least three times a year, would whip me on the athletic, some athletic venue, like four field goals my senior year, thanks a lot. I haven't forgotten. But, but I am proud overall, I am excited to be here. Several things I wanna say, there's never enough time at these, at these meetings to talk about all the issues, valid issues that come up. But I just wanted to point out, our, our firm, you know, I live in Lunenburg, but proud to have our law firm here in Farmville. Our firm, I was counting it up, has been affiliated with the Folks family for more than 50 years. On the predecessor of my father and then his former law partner. I remember doing titles for the Folks family back when Billy Hay was, was representing this family. They have owned property in Prince Edward County for a long time. And they have, over the years, cobbled together some of the more undesirable pieces of property at the time and turned them into timber investment land. They have been harvesting timber responsibly and been good stewards of the property, they work with their neighboring, they work with their owners, they work with, I mean, with their, with their neighbors on easement issues, access, recreation. More often than not, when they could, when it's feasible, they would do select cuts on their timber and not do the, not do the clear cutting, which of course causes a whole lot of erosion. And, and so, so they have been responsible stewards of the land. And so when we do these solar projects, it really is a team, team effort. When we were negotiating these contracts with CEP, I told the Folks family, you know, we're negotiating now, it's like them signing you up as a player. But once you're signed up on the contract, you're with the team, it's a team effort. And I can't think of a better team than this county, which has embraced solar in a very responsible way. The Folks family and Commonwealth Energy Partners, who are local, right down the road, I've worked with them for five, six, six years now, and I can't think of a, a better team for a project like this that is about as insulated and compact a project as you will see. And I highly encourage the county to consider its approval. Thank you for your time, it's great seeing all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Skylar Zunk? Is that close? That's perfect. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Skylar Zunk. I'm here on behalf of Energy Right this evening. It's been a pleasure to engage in Prince Edward County for the past couple of years. I know many members of my team have had the privilege of appearing before you today. As you may know, Energy Right is a conservative nonprofit focused on advocating for property rights, and then all of the above, energy strategy here in Virginia, and an energy dominance agenda. With any, with any development, you know, it's very difficult for folks to come up and speak before you guys in support of something new and different. Over the past several weeks engaging in Prince Edward County, our team has gathered the names of 70 folks who have signed a petition in support of smart, responsible solar development within Prince Edward County. Small, meaningful, and responsible projects like this one are a slam dunk. These are the kinds of projects that are low impact, are able to be confined to small acreages, really have an outsized impact on the locality. Let me zoom out for a moment. As mentioned earlier, Virginia's in an all-out energy crisis. We import 40% of the electricity that we use on a daily basis. And as Governor Youngkin mentioned in his State of the Commonwealth address, the price that energy has gone up tenfold in the past several years. So we're importing so much that cost is going up. We need more Virginia-made clean energy. I'd like to call to your attention two elements of solar that I'd like you to, to, to consider. This past week, I had the chance to spend Wednesday afternoon on the Alt family farm in Pamplin, technically within Prince Edward County, and received a tour of Mr. Alt's 5-megawatt solar facility, got to meet the grazer who's grazing his flock of sheep there, and hear Mr. Alt's story. He was thrilled by the project that's been on his property for the past few years. It's saved the other 80% of his farm, keeping it in active agriculture, rather than having to subdivide it, which was his retirement plan prior to this solar project, coming to his facility, or coming to his property in Pamplin. He's a willing, eager landowner who wants to explore a different way of keeping his land and his family continuing to produce agriculture and generating clean electricity for the grid. My second little story that I wanna highlight is that our team had the chance to sit down with a rural county supervisor within the past couple of weeks, who recently had the chance to vote on a couple 5-megawatt solar projects. His main mantra for us was, every single megawatt matters. A lot of times we just focus on the landowner or the energy going out on the transmission grid. He shared a little story with us, and the largest employer in his county employs 300 people. And that's a factory that uses three megawatts of electricity to power its operations. It's also where that energy goes, it's our homes and businesses. We absolutely need more energy in Virginia in order to be competitive, in order to attract new investment. Energy is the most important thing that we don't think about every single day. So thank you, appreciate your time, and of course, Energy Right remains as a resource to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, I got it here. Alan Folks grew up in this area, Cannon, David know me well. Lived in, grew up in Burkeville, went to school here in Farmville. So mainly, Notaway and Prince here, my stomping grounds where I grew up. Presently, I live in Chester, been living there for 20, 30 years. Our father, well, our family has been in this area since the 1600 to 1700, somewhere, goes way back there, if I remember right, or Judy might know. But our father had put this land together when he was rural mayor carry over the, over the years, and we're trying to be good stewards of the land. We were taught to look out for the community, not just us. And Mr. Gillum, you were over at the other meeting at the, at the, the prior meeting, some of this might repeat, but I mean, we, we, on this property itself, we had this land, I think our father bought this property in the 1960s, and he had it surveyed. We had this, we wanted to timber this property three, four years ago. And we had it surveyed again, and we found out there was an error in the survey, and we were over on another property owner by three or four acres. We could have not said anything, but we did, we did the right thing with nobody's looking and go ahead, contact the other owner, gate, make sure they had the land so the land wouldn't be cut, and we paid for the price to have everything resurveyed or, you know, recorded, we paid everything. We also had, like, in 2013, we had some land over at High Bridge, and it was one of the forts, you got four forts over there. You got the fort right there, by Sees right now, the state park. And if you're like going down where the, where the railroad track, you should be going towards the bridge, there's another fort that's back in the woods, you don't see it. And you used to, our father used to take us back there. It was a very cool place to go because you couldn't get down there unless you had a hike, it's like going back in the Mayan ruins and stuff. But we wanted to make sure that the, the state and the local people got that land. We could have sold us somebody else and could have timbered it, but we didn't wanna do that. So we made sure through the Civil War Trust, they then got it over to the state, and it's part of the state park for everybody now. And so we, we would not put a project like this up unless we were trying to do the right thing. And CEP's put great setbacks, more than is required. And my pleas would, uh, and I'm just looking at my other notes here, I just, I just, we wanna be good neighbors and low impact as much as you can on other people, and, and we would not use a company like, they're a good company, we would not use somebody else. So we thought they had a good reputation, they're the local. And so this is, I think it would be a great fit for this county. It's, it's gonna help to take the pressure off of other owners that have, that pay taxes, they won't have to pay as much taxes. When you have small-scale solar, there's a place for solar along with agriculture and timber, there's plenty for everybody. If I remember correctly, from the meeting at the planning commission, the, the commissioner or the head person was saying, it's less, one, less than one-half, 1% of the, of land in this county right now is considered under-solar or considering solar or solar. So I please vote yes for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Judy Rico?
Okay, thanks. I was gonna introduce myself, but I think it's already been done by Mr. Hawthorne. My name is Judy Folks Rice. We're in town to visit my mother-in-law, and it happened to coincide with this meeting. Now, my mother, you've heard about my father, but my mother was Shirley Newman-Folks, so she came from Farmville. So again, we, our roots here run deep, and so we really care about what happens up here. CEP, we chose them because they're responsible. And some of the other things have been touched on by my brother and the rest of the people here. But I would like to point out that personally for me, having a solar farm helps solve some of the problems that we see from the atmosphere holding more water and things flooding more, which Farmville is well aware of. So personally for me, this is my way of helping solve those kind of problems. I wouldn't want a solar farm around somebody that was not screened, and, and that's what these people plan on doing. So, um, thank you.
Keith Rice? Are you next?
I guess that's me. All right. Well, yes, I'm Keith Rice. We're from Clinton, Tennessee. I grew up in Notaway County and graduated from Crewe High School many years ago, and went to Virginia Tech in engineering, ended up down at Oak Ridge National Lab where I was involved in energy research and development for 39 years. And I guess the general question, the general comment I'd like to make is that since, you know, my family, Judy is my wife, and since their family has been involved in this, and I'm retired, I, I tend to dig into a lot of the questions and issues that have come up with regard to the, you know, the various issues that are raised about solar and the, and the, the problems that are claimed to be with solar energy. And I've looked into a lot of those and I found, even just in the last year, there's a report out, a 68-page report from the, the Saban Law Center that goes into all of the claims against solar, and they have debunked about, they have a paper that they've debunked in detail, 15 of them, a number of the things that are brought up here today, especially things about, well, it's gonna take a lot of resources to build the collectors and, and all that. And, and those things have been analyzed in great detail, and the numbers to generate the collectors and all that are so small relative to all the other benefits of, of them. And they, solar collectors are much better in terms of reducing carbon in the atmosphere, even than the trees, which everyone thinks probably are better than solar, but that's not really the case. The solar collectors are about 230 times better per acre than a full mature stand of hardwoods. And so if you look into the details of a lot of these questions, you'll find that a lot of these things have been debunked. And the problem is, a lot of things get circulated on the internet and, and, and repeated and repeated, but most of those things, when you look into the references, if they do give you references and you dig into it, the, the references they give usually are window dressing, and you look into them, which I have done with a number of them, and what they say is what the reference says, it's not what is in there. They're just making you feel like, you know, there are a lot of problems, but when you dig down into it, in my experience, there are very few of those problems real. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. Can we have a drink?
Good afternoon, everybody. How many people have actually been to this site and looked at this site on the board? So you do know there's...
I know the site, but I've not been to the site.
A lot of rocky, hilly, drain off, and it's right there at 360, right on the drag. I drive by there every day. Don't think it's a very good go because, I know it's not a good go, because there was a sinkhole on 360 a couple years ago. You remember that? Did you dot mansion know about that?
Remember.
Yeah, big problem. So we almost had a big catastrophe with that big sinkhole. So if a storm comes by and gets all these solar panels and they're damaged, guess what happens to the solar panels? They have to be shipped off to a different state. There's one state in Texas that they're looking at billions of dollars, the county is, looking at billions of dollars to get rid of the damaged solar panels. The county is looking at billions of dollars to get rid of the damaged solar panels because they don't have any place to put them. So with this glass, and it's a big storm, and it goes everywhere, and you're just riding down the road, and you're in the middle of the tornado. Yeah, you're going to call your insurance company. When you wreck your car, how long does it take to get it fixed? How long is it going to take to get these fixed? Please say no for the property owners. And when you go to sell your land, did you know this? When you go to sell your land, you cannot sell your land because you're tied into a contract. I have several friends in North Carolina, they cannot sell their land because they got tied into these. Please say no.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I've heard everybody signed up. I do believe there are a couple of people online. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak during this hearing?
Stand by one second, sir.
Can the board hear?
Yeah. Okay, start now.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is Darren Reed, Susan Reed, and we are probably not being there this evening. We were tied up with a client. We are the other landowners from the folks. So folks own the property, actually 360, we own all of the rest of it. We basically grew up in the coast in Virginia, I've been working throughout the June, my father and grandfather developed here. I got my degree in biology from Randolph Bank College, where I met Susan, who is from Kopeck. And this part, we met in Randolph Bank College, and we got married. She's got a master's in education of the University of Richmond, and I've got an MBA from the Avery College. So after college, I went to a company in Richmond for 12 years, started my own company, and have it lived here in over 15 years. I'm a biologist, love the outdoors, and we love our little piece of property there, and know how to take care of these landowners. We actually bought that property about 12 years ago, and it was cut over about 15 years ago. So the property that they're looking to utilize is actually very flat and does not have any imperatives. Anybody that's been on that property, go to the community, it was not been on the property, piece of property, I actually maintain the roads, the trail between the folks' property and my property on a routine basis, so I can hunt them. And then after a while sometime, they cut that property over 15, 16 years ago, so that property does have an imperative now, 15 years. Last college student, teacher, from the coast in Virginia, professional becoming assistant principal of Longford School, left a special 20-year education program. We've taken stewardship of the property very seriously for the last 15 years, and frequently have friends and family visited and did a property, spent two weeks. The point here is you're not having somebody from New York, or California, or Texas owns a piece of property trying to grow a solar panel on it. We own the property, we actually have a cabin right there at the top corner, right corner of the light booth for our cabin, right at the end of our lane. And the back of the road, the emergency road back to the city. And being business owners and entrepreneurs, we got the call from the P, we decided to once again do our homework, let the people live outside. At that point, just like everything else, we went frozen time, very quickly discovered there was a bunch of them that all repeated years, or not really. And I agree, being a biologist, we kind of research the effects of solar panel on properties, animals. We visit, we visit the CFP facility in Richmond and spoke to their board and their owners, and we also have them out in our property service. We worked with CFP, figure out how we can make this work and maintain this property for our enjoyment as well as, definitely been improving it for our friends and families, our life numbers. Today, we'll bring out adult kids, our grandkids, or school kids who work community for the property in order to show them how it's not only just poor property, it's also maintaining stewardship of the land. Side line is that after our thorough research, we concluded that we believe that this is a small safety, this project, in respect to the ask, we recommend approval for this project.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else online that wishes to speak on this hearing?
Anybody there? Nope.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, I'm not sure if I've missed my opportunity to speak.
Oh, you have time, you can go ahead.
I can speak in the general participation or just with the hearing?
Just with the solar. Where they live.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But you can go ahead and speak if you want to, baby. Hello?
No, I just could speak in general, not without the...
We talking about solar right now?
Yes, I wasn't sure.
How's the board think? Okay.
No, no, I'm sure I don't want to speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're going to take a vote now.
I have another question. This grazing of sheep.
Yes.
You provide a well and waters, where do they get the water from for these herds of sheep?
So, you know, this project is not committed to grazing sheep at this point. It's certainly a possibility. Having water on site is important, and there are, you know, there's a creek on site that can typically be used to access the water. I also have some comments in response to the public comment, if there's, if we get a moment for that, but I'm happy to answer your question in the meantime. Yeah, sheep grazing is increasingly viable. You know, typically, they need, the grazers need a project of sufficient scale in an area to, you know, to make it worth their travel to that location. So smaller projects like this become viable when they're sort of that anchor project in the area that they, you know, already has them coming there, and they can drop a few sheep off here on their way there. So, yeah, I hope that answers your question.
Do you know, anybody knows the one at Pamplin, do they have waters, where the sheep get water on that Pamplin project?
Yeah, you know, we were actually at an industry conference a couple of weeks ago, and this was a big topic, so I learned a little bit about it. If there's no water on site, you're trucking in water, which is not, you know, impossible, but it just complicates things a little bit. I think typically, they like access to a well or a stream of some sort to provide water for the sheep.
They don't like access to streams anymore, right, David?
That's correct.
Fence them off.
Fence them out.
Keep them out. They don't want animals in the stream.
Oh, yeah, the sheep don't go in the stream. I think it's more of an access to collect water and put it in like, I forget what those big, you know, water containers are that are kept on site, but, yeah, that's, the sheep don't go in the water.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, sheep, where to go?
We need a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to make a motion that the board approve, they approve the special use permit for the project and enlisted conditions for Oak Lane. I was talking. Two by go?
I'd have to say no at this time.
Okay. Dr. O'Donnell Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
I say yes to this.
Okay. Two by Jones?
No.
Two by Jenga, yes?
Yes.
Yes. No, it's him, no.
All right, question carries. Next public hearing, since the application has received approval, our next public hearing has to do with the siting agreement related to the construction operation of the same 5-megawatt solar facility pursuant to section 15.2, 2316.8b of the Code of Virginia. The host locality shall include a public hearing pursuant to subsection A, 15.2, 2204 for the purpose of consideration of such siting agreement. If a majority of the quorum of the members of the board present at such public hearing approve of such siting agreement, the siting agreement shall be executed by the signatures of the chief executive officer of the host locality and the applicant or the applicant's authorized agent. The siting agreement shall continue in effect until it's amended, revoked, or suspended. The public hearing for, notice for this public hearing was published in the April 30 and May 2nd editions of the Farmville Herald. The agreement for the solar siting agreement includes a one-time upfront voluntary payment of $112,500, which represents $22,500 per megawatt, plus the annual payment of $1,400 per megawatt acre for a total estimated taxable revenue of $561,587. So with that, I'd ask you, Mr. Chairman, to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing on that? Hold that down. Get it again.
We had nobody sign up, and it looks like there's nobody wishes to speak. Let's go ahead and close it, Mr. Chairman.
Close that? I'm going to make a motion if we approve a siting agreement with Oak Lane Farm LLC for the purpose of 5-megawatt solar energy facility. And I was talking. Okay. Yeah? Two by go?
No.
Two by Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Cap?
Yes.
Two by Jones?
Do you mind if I provide a comment on my vote? Going forward, okay. I like to keep stats as we're listening to public comment. By my count, we had 13 people sign up. Eight people spoke in favor of this project. By my count, at least six stand to profit or a family member profit. That's including, not including, family, friends. And five speaking out against. Special thanks to staff for your diligence in making sure that we're, if we move forward, as the previous vote said, that we are moving forward, that we do it in the most responsible way possible. I don't know if there's a, I don't believe there's a way we can fully do that responsibly, but that, the vote of the board stands. There were a couple of different arguments in opposition. There's lots of different arguments you can choose to use your time on. I would not choose to use the NIMBY argument, the not in my backyard, or the view shed, or the noise annoyance argument personally. The, my top four arguments that I would use in just thinking through this, what's best for our community, panel leakage, if it is cracked, I understand that they're thoroughly sealed, but 40-year-old plasticking glass, you know, towards the end of this lifespan. I know how my windshield held up in a hailstorm last year, so that's something to be concerned about if the interior of my car was full of cadmium, which is a carcinogen, among other toxic heavy metals. Number two is panel disposal. There was some discussion there. I've still yet to see actual names and addresses and cost associated to recycling, and how that cost is going to be covered and a prorated, maybe bond system or something to cover that increase in cost. Last public hearing. Number three, we had one of our local scientists speaking about the weather influence of that panel reflection. Someone who spoke in favor, I won't call names, but someone who spoke in favor talked about how it's actually, they, in their opinion, a good idea for these panels to prevent the atmosphere from holding water. And I'll cede the point that it does prevent the atmosphere from holding water, but it does that by heating localized areas of the atmosphere and creating violent thunderstorms. And that's the way that the precipitation is begun. So if that's the way we want to do that, I'm not sure it is. Also, another point from last month that I have yet to hear a good response to, I am total in agreement that we have huge energy demands in Virginia. The increasing demands on electricity with artificial intelligence, with everyone carrying around a supercomputer in their pocket. We have tremendous needs for electricity, we're going to. I fully believe we should be energy independent. I believe we should do that with an energy production method that is at least 30% efficient. If you, energy needs are important, so are transportation needs. If your transportation was only efficient one out of four days, and you couldn't get to work the other three days, I don't know if we would consider that a valuable transportation solution. So as we are looking for energy solutions, I think that's an important point to keep in mind. Also, my last point, and then I'll get off my soapbox and vote. Check your, check your energy bill, at least from Dominion Power, and see whether this green energy is causing your bill to go up or down. In our presentation, we heard that it's kind of driving solar prices down, but see if your energy bill actually has a clean energy surcharge on it. I will vote yes on this siting agreement because this is how we get paid, and the project has already been approved, so I think we should at least get paid for the cost that it is going to cause us in the long term. So my vote is yes.
Okay. I'm going to vote yes on it. Two by Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
I too would just like to say a couple of things. I agree with the former's speech there, especially on the one thing I would like to bring up, his very last one, was that if it's driving our energy costs down, I'd like to know why that I'm paying a green energy tax on seven Dominion places and four for Southside, which both of those are supposed to be the ones that are working the most towards it. And my electric bill has gone up significantly in the last three or four months, so I would like the solar people to come up with a absolute as to why that's happening, since every time that they come here, they seem to say that it drives it down. So I'd like to know the truth, either or. And I'm not calling you out a liar, that's not what I'm saying. I just want to know the truth on whether it is or whether it isn't. I can tell you that I pay more, I'd be glad to provide that, so I can tell you of that. So therefore, as he just said, the reason why I would vote yes on this is because it is our siting agreement, it's the way we get paid, and it's also the way that we hold you accountable to these conditions. And as I brought up, I would, I would like the board in the future to look at some of these provisions and things and see what we're doing, because I think that 60 days is way too much to find out who owns the project. I think it's way too long to figure out if they're decommissioning, who's going to do it, but my vote is yes.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'd like to put my two cents worth in for what it's worth. In the future, if you can locate property that doesn't have all of the streams running through the middle of it, I would be more inclined to look at it and agree with you. Number two is if this water's running downhill into Sandy River reservoir in the project that we're trying to get going, we may be making the biggest mistake we ever made in our lives. And I go back to my thoughts about thinking about down the road, questions that haven't been answered yet. We have to be responsible the best we can. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that one passes, Mr. Chair, by a vote of seven to one. Next item on the agenda is, I'll say, deferral, the Green Bay Solar Public Hearing. The applicant, CEP Solar, has requested the board to again defer it one additional month until the June 10th meeting. They are, again, like this project, working to modify the project to address the concerns that were raised by the public and planning commission members at the last hearing, and that'll be on your June agenda. Next item, 14, is proclamation of Building Safety Month. Building Safety Month is a campaign that reinforces the need for the adoption of regularly updated building codes. It helps to ensure that families and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. It also reminds people to take care of routine maintenance and... It also reminds people to take care of routine maintenance and be aware of areas in their home that could cause severe damages if they don't. We want to ensure that we always have a clear line of communication with our residents and contractors. We want them to feel they can contact our office in order to have any or all questions answered. In your packet is a draft proclamation, and I would ask the board's consideration of that resolution.
So moved. Second. Two by Joe? Two by him?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
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 Two by him?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item, Mr. Chair, in your packet is a request for a VDOT TAP grant application for Zion Hill Road. Attached to the packet is the board's consideration as a resolution for endorsement of a grant application to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for a transportation alternative or TAP project for the installation of sidewalks along Route 628 Zion Hill Road to connect Prince Edward County Elementary, Prince Edward County Middle, Prince Edward County High School, and the Prince Edward County Career and Technical Ed campuses to the 138-unit Palpa Forest apartment complex located on the far east end of Route 628. Last year, the county received a grant through the Ready, Set, Go program to study the feasibility of the project. The study has been completed, and a proposed route and cost estimate identified. There's a smaller version in your packet, but a larger version on the DAAS that's led by 17 that shows the route. Each phase includes design, right-of-way acquisition, construction. We're fortunate in that most of the, of the property is owned by the school board or the town. The project is eligible to be funded through the TAP program, which provides an 80/20 match. There's a breakdown there of phases. I am confident that in a couple of years, it's gonna take, I think we're talking about a 2029, 2030 build, that we could come up with match from a combination of either leftover dollars from, hopefully, the manor turn lane project, leftover dollars from elementary school project, leftover school operational funding and/or fund balance. If after bids the county elected to not move forward with the project, the county would be liable to VDOT for project management funds, but that would end the project. Board could also elect to move forward with just Phase One, which is connection to the apartments and the high school, and wait to apply for funding for Phase Two and a later round of the downsides that costs would go up over time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
800,000, 800,000 is that far?
Up to 800. It really is gonna depend on the bid. They, they've got a good padded estimate. I, I agree, it's, it feels like a lot for a sidewalk, but, you know, I think it's-
That's our, that's our part, it's 4 million for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
How many, how many?
Well, it's, again, that's estimated to 2030's construction cost, so they've, they've upped the estimate.
So what's the average return that the school give us, we get back from the school?
This past year was over $2 million.
That's the money we're gonna, that you need to use, that we need to use to pay for.
We've got some of that in our budget, right?
Yeah, that, that's routinely, historically, the school, oh, we always give money back. Now we got this capital project, I mean, but is, is it children's bus not picking the students up?
They don't pick up from the apartment complexes.
The kids walk.
They walk from Palpa Forests.
That's a safety hazard.
Well, that's why they asking for the sidewalk. It is a safety hazard.
A lot of them kids walking, walking the road.
And that's, well, the cost come, we could look at only doing that first half, that's one option. But a lot of those kids are going to elementary school and middle school, so-
That's worse.
You really want both of them connected up. If you were building the school today, you'd have put the sidewalk in, let's put it that way.
I think, I mean, to me, I think safety of our children is very important, so I, I'll make a motion that we approve it. Phase, at least Phase One.
Second.
You can't have the children walking the roadway and somebody get hit. I mean, a life is more important than a couple of dollars.
That's it. That's it. Is, is Phase One cover out to the-
Not away to the, it's to the high school?
To high school. You get, you can see the break on that page, name right there.
Oh, I see it there.
Truly, it's Phase Two, but I call it Phase One, that's the most important piece. With a chance, we may only get, we only, may only get a grant from VDOT for one of the two, and we'd have to go back in a future cycle. So there's a couple of different, I'll say, decision points decide whether or not this project moves forward or not.
I thought if you go to the high school and you go to football field, you go across the parking lot, isn't a sidewalk to get up to the elementary school across there?
How much would it cost to run a bus over there? Less than $800,000?
Less than 2.1 million.
Well, and remember, it's, it's during ex, ex, extracurricular stuff in the afternoon, so it's not just the one run morning and afternoon, it's the connection. And I think the other thing you're seeing is, eventually, kids are gonna be walking from the high school to Wawa. Because if you've got an afternoon basketball game and you're staying at the school, you're gonna go up and buy a drink or something else. So you've got, that's why, that's a whole separate thing as far as across and across 15, but gets us up that far if we get there.
Devil's advocate, they've been hopping in the car and riding the sheets up until now.
Some walk, some in the morning, if you walk, they walk from town to the high school. From sheets all the way in.
I think there's a point that right there, it's more to our attention, if we don't do anything, if somebody get hurt, then it made, it looked like, you know, you might go about it and didn't take-
You making a motion for Phase One, Jerry?
At least Phase One.
Or is that, I would say, let's clarify, it's Phase Two on the map. If you only wanted to do one, I think the other thing is that we can wait and see what VDOT approves, then you can-
Can we go back and get Phase Two after we do one and look, look at the funding?
Absolutely, y'all can do any of them. You get, but, so is it the important piece, do the ones between the schools, or is it from the high school back to the apartment complex?
I think we go from a high school back to the apartment.
All right, that's Phase Two.
Well, that's Phase Two. That's one that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Because I think if you can walk across that, I mean, I could go to homecoming, and you can walk across that parking lot where they do the stand, where the football field is.
Walk through the parking lot.
Walk through the parking lot and get up to the elementary school, and get off the roadway.
So you're gonna change your, you're gonna change your motion?
Yeah, let's do Phase Two. I thought Phase One was the one from-
I understand.
Yeah.
That's the reason why I'm asking, I wanna make sure what the, what the motion is.
I think it's important to get, at least get to the high school from the apartment complex.
You still second that, Patty?
Yes.
The sidewalk in front of the high school will take them from there west to at least the football field.
You could, you'd have to cut through the parking lot, she can-
You have to cut through the parking lot, but that walk, it's a sidewalk that it can almost get them all the way up there to the elementary school. It'd be a whole lot better situation than it is now.
I would, I would second Phase Two.
Okay, we'll vote. Two by Joe?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the what?
Yes.
You want to go?
No.
Do you think, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First item up is school appropriation for FY25. We've received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board to appropriate state funds totaling $7,500 from the assisting Virginia, virtual Virginia Summer Session Grant to the instruction budget line described below, and there is no local match for that appropriation.
So moved.
Second. Two by Gil? Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the what?
Yes.
Two by Joe?
Yes.
Do you think it's yes? Two by Joe?
Yes.
Two by town?
Yes.
Two by you? Yes.
The next item is also a school appropriation. We've received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board to appropriate local funds totaling $190,476 to the school operating budget as described below. Although this, although the letter states that these are local funds, staff has confirmed with the school board staff, the request should have been made for state funds provided for the bonus payment allocation, and there's no local match for that appropriation either.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Two by the go?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the what?
Yes.
Two by Joe?
Yes.
Do you think yes? Two by Joe?
Yes.
Two by town?
Yes.
Two by the other?
Yes.
The next item is IDA reimbursement appropriation. The IDA received a request for state for tax incentive payments from the Sandy River Distillery. Incentive payments are directly linked to real estate and personal property taxes collected by the county. Sandy River Distillery also receives a tourism grant for five years in the amount of $5,000 per year. This grant is funded by the transient occupancy tax. Staff is asking the board to appropriate funds previously collected to reimburse the IDA for tax incentive and grant expenditures.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Two by the other?
Yes.
Two by town?
Yes.
Two by the Cooper Joe?
Yes.
Do you think it's a yes? Two by Joe?
Yes.
Two by the what?
Yes.
Two by the Pratt?
Yes.
And two by the go?
Yes.
The next item, the Commissioner of Revenue has asked to come to speak to the board.
Who? Oh, no.
Good afternoon to the board. It's a pleasure to see all of you. So, I'm putting my glasses on. So I'm requesting Just Appraised is a deed processing software proposal. So currently, the real estate transfer process within the Commissioner of Revenue's office is acquainted and inefficient. To keep up with the transfer demands, the Commissioner of Revenue is requesting the board approve the attached proposal for Just Appraised. The software will allow deeds to be uploaded and updated nightly in real time. This will increase visibility, print-on-demand accuracy, time for solving problem deeds, property filings, and GIs mapping corrections. The board is asked to approve the proposal and transfer the one-time implementation cost of $10,000 from the Commissioner of Revenue's part-time salary and wages. The annual subscription and maintenance fee of $15,000 will be billed in July of 2025 and was factored into the approved fiscal year '26 budget. So with that being said, I have attached, so for the tax year of 2024, our grand total of transfers was 1,322. This, and I can pass it around, you guys can pass it around if you want to, so this is basically how one transfer is being completed. So it's all of that paperwork for one transfer, and then it has to be manually input into our computer system. It's very time consuming, and, you know, times are evolving, you know, times are changing, and I feel like it would be very beneficial to Prince Edward County and very beneficial to the taxpayers as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the software proposal and budget transfer as outlined.
Second.
All right. Two by the go?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the what?
Yes.
Two by Joe?
Yes.
Do you think it's a yes? Two by the Cooper Joe?
Yes.
Two by the town?
Yes.
Two by the other?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
That'd be $15,000 a year for, apparently, just one time, or is that-
Thank you.
That's a one-time, that's a one-time purchase, right, Chris? That's your software purchase.
Um, yes. What I'm requesting, the $10,000, that is a one-time implementation that I'm gonna asking for the transfer for my budget to pay for.
And then the 15 next year, is that every year, or is that, that's the software life?
That's a yearly cost to maintain that system.
It's a yearly cost, and it's on a three-year contract.
Okay.
So I'm asking for the $1,500 from the board, and then it's already been worked into the approved fiscal year for '26.
Okay. And if it doesn't work, we can come back and say it didn't work, and we can get out of the contract? Yeah.
Yes. I feel like I've done my due diligence. I've been working on this for probably about seven or eight months, and I've talked to Roger with Bright, which is the current system we're on. I've talked with Sean with IT. We did a Zoom, Doug, IT, and myself. You know, so I, I feel like it could be very beneficial to the county and to my office. So, you know, we're trying to stay on top of things and just keep up to date and-
Y'all remember, at one point, we were 14 months behind in transportation.
It sounds like we all wanna go to semi-annual tax collection. This could get you closer, right? I mean, this is, you should be a lot more productive as your goal to get there, right?
Yeah, it, it would definitely open up some opportunity for that, because right now, as what you guys were seeing, what we do for one transfer is very time-consuming, and when you're looking at 1,322 transfers, give or take a year, that's a lot of time that we could put to better use.
Yeah.
And that's just my opinion, but I thank you guys very much for your support, and it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She says she has a good new hire as well.
Yes.
She had an open spot.
I had an open spot, so I have a new hire. This is her second week, and she's working out really well. She's kinda like myself, she likes to be busy, which I love. She's very bubbly, so I think she's really good for the public, but so far, so good. So-
What's her name?
My team's doing a great job.
What's your, what's your name?
Oh, Stacy Cluttenstein.
Oh, okay.
So I'm very pleased, and I hope you guys are as well, and we're gonna keep working hard to provide the best we can for you guys and for the taxpayers.
Doing good.
Thank you.
Doing well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Next item is the Circuit Court Clerk position request. The 2025 General Assembly has approved an additional position and funding for a Deputy Clerk IV position in the Circuit Court Clerk's office. This position was allocated to assist with anticipated workload increases resulting from the implementation of HB 2723/SB 1466 related to sealing and expungement of court records. Lynette Co., Circuit Court Clerk, requests that the board approve the additional compensation board position. The General Assembly's budget language directs the localities that funding for this new position may not supplant local funds currently provided for salaries. Therefore, the county must keep the current county-funded position. To reduce the county's costs associated with benefits for this position, current staff will move into the newly funded Deputy Clerk IV position. The county-funded position will be reduced to a starting salary of $37,000, and the FY26 Circuit Court Clerk's budget will need to be amended as outlined below to accommodate the associated county costs.
Sounds like you don't have a whole lot of choice.
See, that, you lose the position.
Don't you love a mandate?
But there is, even though they fund the position, there are some local cost of benefits, but she's been able to shift stuff within her budget to cover it.
So you said there's a starting salary of $37,000. When does this salary change? We just, you will evaluate and determine if it will change?
The county-funded, the county-funded position won't be filled until probably fiscal year, and so it would be $37,000 starting in July 1.
July of '26 would be the first time that potentially would change.
Yeah.
So basically, the next budget year after that. So it'll start at $37,000, they'll fill it, and that one won't have a chance to get a pay raise, in theory, until the next, the next budget.
Next fiscal year, yeah.
All right. I moved that the board of supervisors, I move the board of supervisors to approve the addition of the Deputy Clerk IV position and the fiscal year '26 budget amendment as outlined above.
The second. Two by Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Two by Town?
Yes.
Do you think it's a yes? Two by Cooper Gill?
Yes.
Two by Town?
Yes.
Two by Emmett?
That's a yes.
And the last item I have for you is F Y twenty-four school carryover request and appropriation to authorize a public hearing. The Board of Supervisors has received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board requesting one million, one million thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty cents of local carryover funds to pay for adding security fencing at Prince Edward County Elementary School and renovation of the auditorium at Prince Edward County High School. The Board of Supervisors will wish to authorize a public hearing to approve and appropriate the funds requested. For this transaction to take place, the board will have to authorize a public hearing to amend the F Y twenty-five county and school budgets by the amount of one million thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty cents, and then appropriate the same funds. Per section fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh seven of the Code of Virginia, a locality may amend its budget during the fiscal year. However, if such an amendment exceeds the currently adopted expenditures by one percent or more, then the locality must advertise the amendment at least seven days prior to the public hearing. The county's currently approved F Y twenty-five budget is currently seventy-five million, four hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, which means they exceed the one percent threshold, and you'll see the request is in your packet.
So moved.
Second. Two by Emmett?
Yes.
Two by Town?
Yes.
Two by Cooper Gill?
Yes.
Do you think it's a yes? Two by Gill?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Before I make my vote, I have a question. The renovation, do you know what this renovation involves? Because it hasn't been a long, long time since that auditorium, no, the auditorium.
Dr. Pride, we are fortunate to have our interim superintendent, Dr. Cox here, who's waited very patiently.
Dr. Cox, would you like to come stand up and add your.
I'm just curious, because it hasn't been a long time since it was renovated.
So I believe this is a two-parter. I think the first is, is the security fence in back of the elementary school. And I think the second thing is, is that, and I couldn't tell you when the auditorium had been renovated before because I haven't been here, but I can tell you that if you, and be happy to give anyone a tour that would like to go to, that's probably the best way to do it. It is in bad need of renovation. From the stage to the sound, to the lights, to the furniture, to the upholstery, to the carpet, in my humble opinion, it really does need renovation. And I have worked exclusively with the school board on that. I've taken them on a tour so that they could see it, and, and I believe that they agree that that would be a good way to go forward. And that's one of your flagship places, I think, in Prince Edward personally, from who it's named after, to the symbolism of that, to the fact that, you know, in your high school, that should be a showcase, and I think this gives that opportunity to do that.
Well, I agree, I know the sound system definitely needs renovation. I was basically talking about the chairs and so forth, a lot of concerns with that, but no, I agree.
As a, as a parent who just attended the musical and the band concert in the last couple of weeks, the sound system, lighting leave a lot to be desired.
Oh, yeah.
And I think there's a, I won't say rotten, but certainly a deteriorating portion of the center of that stage that's settled, that really needs to get repaired, but. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Cox.
You're welcome, thank you.
No, my voice is yes.
Mr. Chair, the county attorney let her know that she was not needed this evening, and which also means that number nineteen, our closed session, is not needed as well. We didn't have an update to pass along. For County Administrators' Report, county consultant and staff are putting the final changes this month on our website update, and hopefully will be completed with that in the next thirty days. We have issued our recycling R F P. We had one vendor that showed up at our non-mandatory pre-bid meeting. I'm excited with what the potential may be if they put a proposal in with some recycling opportunities. Proposals are due on May twenty-eighth, and that will be on your June agenda for consideration. That said, we were notified last week that STEPS would not be accepting any recycling material. Apparently, both of their bailers are broken down. Sharon Harb indicated they did not expect STEPS to be in a position to be back up in operation prior to the end of June when our R F P process were, will be completed. So we've got a vendor that has stepped in and hauling our recycling right now out of the county, and so Jeff and his staff, working with the consultant, have it taken care of. Our Connects broadband project as of May one, we're still at about three hundred and seventy miles of conduit and fiber installed, and about four thousand homes and businesses have been passed with over eight hundred and fifty customer installs. I had the opportunity to go out to Rice last week, and they were putting fiber in the ground, and we were watching their manpower and equipment. It's also kind of neat, Randy Cook, who's our buildings and grounds supervisor, too, his stepsons were on the crew, so keeping an eye on them. We also had a meeting with C R C and D H C D, which is the state agency, to talk about the project and delays. The goal was still to get the project overall completed by the third quarter. As you know, Planet Network came in and bought out basically Connects and its assets, and they spent a lot of time over the last six months addressing quality control issues with the subcontractors. So they, Connects has been hiring a lot of subcontractors to put the conduit and fiber in, and in some cases, Planet Network is having to go back and redo that work. They gave one example, about two miles of fiber had to be replaced, so hopefully, they've caught up with that, and, you know, they'll be able to, I guess, address that, that with those subcontractors by withholding payment, hopefully, from the subcontractors. We're, as we near the completion of the Comp Plan and the completion of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the request that Dr. Pride, who is our Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, I'm working with Talia St. Clair to pull together an outline to get our strategic plan reviewed and updated, it's that time again. So we're gonna have a meeting with Dr. Pride the next month to pull a schedule together and bring back to the full committee and the board here this summer. And just on the radio system, I wanted to report that we had a really good meeting with Dominion. We were worried, we were not going to be able to go on the Dominion Tower, and I want to thank Scott Davis for helping us reach out to Dominion and get that going again. We've got a potential site in the Drawings and Heights area with a tower vendor, and so hopefully, we'll have space. They're gonna be putting an application in to the planning commission here in the next few months, and then we're working to work out at least on the Lee Mountain Tower. That will be our three sites, so knock on wood, county will not have to get into the tower business and build a tower, which will be more cost-effective. Most importantly, we'll have to avoid that maybe three, four thousand dollar a month lease by space on one of the towers. So Trey's working, working, working his magic, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that resolved here in the near future. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions.
Okay. Do we go to recess?
We have. An addendum packet and item twenty-two. Sarah, you want to handle that?
So your leap-breaking table pack was following the Properties Committee that met this evening. I will say that the Properties Committee has been hard at work the last several months on a number of, of projects that are going on in the county, but specifically tonight, they met and discussed the Worsham Convenience Site, which is ready now, the design is complete, and you will see, I'm sorry, I'm not as efficient as Karen, so my pages aren't numbered, but if you flip over a couple of pages, you'll see the schematic layout of the, of the Worsham Convenience Site and also the proposed project schedule. So the committee brings to the board a recommendation to authorize the issuance of the invitation for bids for the Worsham Convenience Site, and then, once the bids are received, it'll go back through the Properties Committee and back, come back to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
Do you think it's a yes? Two by Penny Cooper?
Yes.
Two by Town?
Yes.
Two by Emmett?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second project that the committee has spent a considerable amount of time on is the proposed new county animal shelter. As the board will recall, this is the, the number one project, ranked project in the county's capital improvement plan. It was for the last plan, it is in the new plan. And so tonight, after a couple of months of reviewing the original plans, the committee is recommending to the board to approve proceeding with the schematic design and design development phases of a, I'm gonna say, a scaled-back animal shelter from about eighty-eight hundred, eighty-five hundred square feet back to about seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five square feet, so that's a considerable reduction in square footage. And now, we need to, to move to the next step and actually start the design process. I will say that a supplemental appropriation is not necessary for the shelter expenditure as the board had previously approved the set aside of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds for costs related to the new animal shelter. And so if you flip further into your table pack, you'll see the proposal from Mosley Architects, and then if you keep flipping, you'll come to a page that has both red and black schematic design, and that's the, the red is the overlay of the scaled-down version over the original design, and that's the work that the Properties Committee has been doing with the, with the architect.
So moved.
Question to the motion. How scaled back is it?
Cost-wise, about thirty percent. So the original estimate was, I'm gonna say ballpark ten million, and now we are under seven.
And I will add, that ten had a contingency of about a million, and now we've got a contingency of about six hundred and something thousand, so. There's, there's cushion in there that may not actualize as real or good.
Sure. I know that there's tons of state requirements on what they require in an animal shelter. Obviously, this is gonna have all of those requirements met. Are we going above that at all with this current design?
I, I don't believe so in terms of, and if you, if you wanna.
Finish is office space.
We got room for growth.
There is a, there's a shell area. This area here is a shell area that's just gonna be an additive alternate.
Yeah, it'll be, we'll have the option. The, the current design would double our number of kennels, however, we're gonna have an option that that be kind of shelled out, not finished.
Yeah.
If the costs come in higher than we want to pay for. So we'll hedge our bets.
So right now, we're kind of doing the bare minimum of what the states require.
We are, and, and I'll say finish-wise, it's a, it's a middle building, we'll dress up the front of it, it'll be concrete block walls and sealed floors, but it's not a courthouse. Yeah, 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 no wood trim.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Those are concerned.
I think, I know there was a.
You have a motion.
A motion. I'm not sure if there was a second.
Second. Second, okay. Two by Emmett? Yes. Two by Town?
Yes.
Two by Penny Cooper?
Yes.
Do you think it's a yes? Two by Gill?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Town? Wait, two by, Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd just like to update the board because we're a little bit insulated here in the boardroom, and you may have heard thunder, but Trey just texted me and said that the Farmville Police Department just closed Third Street at J W's because of several inches of water over the road. The storm is moving fast, shouldn't be another fifteen minutes, and will taper off quickly. There was a swiftwater rescue dispatched a short time ago when you saw Trey zip out, out on Sulphur Springs Road, so the western part of the county has received significant rainfall. I will say that the individuals that were in the vehicle on Sulphur Springs Road, from what I understand, are safe and were able to remove themselves from the water, but the sheriff had also texted and said he had deputies en route, so please be careful going home and be aware that standing water could be all over the county, but especially maybe Dr. Pride in your area, Lou, David, it seems to now be shifting east, but please be aware of those road hazards as you go home tonight.
Don't drive through standing water.
Please. Turn around, don't drink.
Been pretty good, I was coming, y'all just come on my funeral.
Mr. Chairman, if we have no further residence, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have business. Just a moment.